Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Today is Thursday, October 19th, 2017. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. We're also on the Internet and on television. Could we please have a roll call?
Good morning. Supervisor Aboud, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowell, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Could we please call on Leslie Seer. Mark is on the agenda with the Salvation Army to get a start on the right foot. Good morning, Leslie. Say hello to Mark. He's telling me Sunny's better half than the best half.
Well, thank you very much. Won't you please pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the promise that it holds. We pray for our lovely city and all those who live here that we may be blessed with prosperity and goodwill. I lift up to you our city supervisors and the decisions that are placed before them. Grant that they may be wise and just and poised with grace as they seek the best for our city. We ask, Lord, for your presence and guidance in the events of today. In the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well now move on to item number five, public comment. This is the time for the public to come on, comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Board of Supervisors. We also take public comment where appropriate during each agenda item and we also take public comment at the end. And public comment, anybody? Anybody here? Oh, okay. Could've just stayed up there. Thanks.
Yeah, I guess I could've just stayed up here. Well, thank you. As many of you are aware, the Salvation Army is conducting a capital campaign to acquire and construct a 12,000 square foot community center. The capital campaign goal is 1,500,000 with our campaign agency, WPO, that they had said that this is a reasonable goal for our community. The Salvation Army, in preparation for this campaign, conducted a needs assessment study which was designed to give the Salvation Army direction with its expansion program for the near and the long-term future. I believe many of you were a part of this study. And it was determined that without contest that we need a bigger facility. With the new facility, with the new expanded facility, the Salvation Army in Carson City would be able to double our community involvement in many areas. One of the necessities that we have for a new building and even for our current one is a commercial kitchen. And this cost is not included in our capital campaign goal. We have applied for a grant with the city. We are aware that another agency had applied for funds for a commercial kitchen and were denied. However, our situation is unique in that we serve the community in many different areas than the other agency and we do not have the same resources or support services available to us that they enjoy. Our current figures for the work that we do in the Salvation Army at our current location at 661 Colorado Street is as follows. Through our family service office, last year in 2016, the Salvation Army provided more than 20,000 services in Carson City and Douglas County with food, rent, utilities, and other emergency needs, with a clear majority being the residents of Carson City. We also provided food boxes for an average of approximately 20 families per day. We have a very active after-school program. It services 35 children per day. Along with after-school activities, we provide snacks for the children. And this number would be expanded dramatically with the completion of our new facility. During the summer, we conduct a day camp program for 50-plus children for eight weeks, five days a week. This number would also expand dramatically with the new facility. But because our clients are low-income, we feel that it is important to provide a meal for the children in this program. And with a commercial kitchen, we would be able to do so. Another program that we provide is our community outreach program where we go to live-in hotels and disadvantaged or low-income apartment buildings and provide hot meals for the residents there and for passersby. Most importantly, this building would become a designated disaster center in the event of a community emergency or catastrophic emergency. This is what the Salvation Army is known for and what we do well. At the moment, the reason Captain Mark Seer is not present here today is because he is in Santa Rosa, not just participating in the relief efforts, but he is the incident commander of the Salvation Army efforts there. He has partnered with the city of Santa Rosa and has positioned the Salvation Army as the lead agency to assist in the repopulation of the burn areas. And Captain Mark is also overseeing five evacuation sites, serving 5,000 meals a day. And I have the statistics from Monday through Sunday that they served 34,000 meals in that time and they are still serving. So with the inclusion of a commercial kitchen, we would have the ability to do likewise. And we would have the ability to serve between 3,000 and 5,000 meals per day as well. Currently, the only commercial kitchen that we have available to us is our mobile canteen kitchen. And though it is usable to cook, it is not adequate. And it would be a better service to be used in transporting hot meals rather than to use it to cook extensively in. Lastly, I would like to mention that most commercial kitchens in the Salvation Army are hosts to culinary arts programs for our adult rehab program graduates. And there's no reason why we wouldn't do likewise. And having chefs and training would be a great asset for the programs that I've mentioned above and would open doors for many other community service opportunities and possibilities. So at this moment, we do a lot with our small space and our limited resources. And I would like to invite you to come to our facility and to let us give you a tour so that you can see for yourself and catch our vision. With these points in mind, I sincerely hope that you will consider us for the grant. If you have any questions.
Well, what are we going to do? You gave us the invocation to start us off, now you want a grant? If I don't give you the grant, I guess what happens, you know? I guess you're going to have to redo that invocation?
Don't worry, I won't take it back to the paper.
All right. All right. Thanks for the update on it. And tell Mark, congratulations and thanks for going down to Santa Rosa to help out down there. And if he gets back, we might want a little report from him on what happened down there.
I agree.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie. All right. All right. Anybody else on public comment? Got a lot of folks. I don't see anybody. Okay, well, we take public comment as we go along, usually anyway here. Okay, so let's take up item six, Minutes of September 21st, 2017. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order for make a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. One abstention. Four and one abstention. Let's take up the agenda. I'm told that item 15A will be pulled. That's a Symantec. That's the exact name of that, right? Symantec?
Symantec.
Symantec. Will not be asking for state offsets, but they are still coming to Carson City, so pull that off and welcome Symantec to Carson City. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Board members? I don't see any others, so unless there's an objection, we will take the agenda as published with the exception of item 15 Alpha. Okay, let's now move from the dais and we'll go down and do some wonderful things for our city and our city employees. Let's go down and we'll take up item special presentations. Eric? Good morning. How are you? Good to see you again this morning. I see you out all the time, man. You're everywhere in the city. Eric, on behalf of a grateful community, and you folks really, you folks really are out there all the time, man, I'll tell you. And I always want to try and stop and say, you know, thanks for what you guys do. I mean, you're out there in all kinds of weather. I saw you during, you know, the floods and everything. It's a big deal. So in recognition and appreciation for your five years of continuous and dedicated service to Carson City, we want to give you this longevity award and thank you for all you do for us, Eric. And then if you could, come on up here, please. Then I'd like James Foster, skilled trades. Morning, James. How are you doing this morning? I understand that you've done some remarkably fine work in helping us complete or move along in our capital asset management program and that you're an integral part of getting that set up. And that's a big deal for our city. It's a big deal because it will help not only what we do today, but the future. And so on behalf of a grateful community, I'd like to, the board would like to give you this longevity award in recognition for your five years of continuous and dedicated service and we look forward to many more. Thank you. Come on up, James. I know. Renee Lappel. I got you, got your uniform on today, too. Renee works as a shift supervisor at the detention facility, the juvenile detention facility. One of them, you know, if anybody hasn't been down to the juvenile detention facility, you should take a trip down there and take a look at what our folks do there. It's really remarkable. They deal with a lot of kids who are troubled and a lot, you know, a lot of kids who have made bad choices. But you always try and make sure that, you know, you get them started off on the right foot again after what they've been through. So Renee, on behalf of a grateful community, the board would like to give you this certificate of longevity award for five years for your service to Carson City. Thank you, Renee. This one I can't read. This is Sina Lloyd, our library director. So what are you reading this morning? Huh?
It's the early morning.
Okay, Sina, let me ask you this. Do you read the hard copies or you read the digital copies of books?
Both. I travel with my Kindle.
All right. You know, it sounds like a politician to me. All right, I thought I'd catch you there. But I do the same thing. Sina, you've just done a remarkable job over at the library in your five years that you've been there. I mean, the library has made immense steps in different avenues of service to our community, really thoughtful ones, and they're, for lack of a better word, what they call progressive moves in terms of looking forward to see what our community needs. I know you got the mobile bicycle library, you got all those other things. You're redoing your library now, at least the flooring of it. When's the library going to be closed? Now?
December 10th.
December 10th. Okay. All right, well, Sina, on behalf of all of us here in the community and our board in particular, thank you for your five years and we look forward to many more. Thanks. Dan Castens. Hi, Dan. How you doing? You know, you look at, you look at Carson City, how many parks do we have? 30?
32 park sites, yeah. And then multiple other facilities that we have.
Yeah. Well, that's a big part of what makes Carson City a great place to live. And, you know, you drive by and you look and these parks are all, you know, well-maintained. I know we got beat up a little bit in the floods and stuff like that, so you're still overcoming some of that. But the quality of life here in Carson City depends on our parks in large part. And so I want to thank you, our board wants to thank you for all that you do for us and give you this five-year certificate for your service to Carson City. Thanks, Dan. Okay.
He goes by Terry.
How you doing, Terry?
Great.
Okay. Is it really true that they call you Skinny?
Usually.
Well, that's all right. Is he really called Skinny? Okay. All right.
Years ago.
Years ago. Well, Terry, you heard me talk earlier about you guys and I just saw you. And I don't know if I saw you out there when I was walking, going down Mountain Street there, but, you know, you guys do a wonderful job for Carson City. And I'll say it again, you know, when people drive by and they see you guys in your jackets and your uniforms here, they know that Carson City's out working hard to make us a better place to live. Okay? So on behalf of the Carson City Board of Supervisors, we'd like to give you this certificate of appreciation for five years and hope for many more. Skinny.
This is your arborist, Woody.
All right. I was talking to you this morning, Woody. You know, what do you think Woody does? Anybody know? Come on, what's, you know, with a name like, with a nickname like Woody, what do you think he does? He's an arborist. Come on, we all know what an arborist is. Well, let me tell you, I saw Gary, he was doing, cutting some elm trees down on Mountain Street and I stopped and talked to him. I mean, you know, and then my wife and I were driving down Mountain Street just yesterday and she said, who did the, who did the trimming on those trees down there? The elm trees? And I said, well, how's the city did that? She said, that's a wonderful job. So Gary, on behalf of all of us, you know, thank you for doing these things. It's nice to have a certified arborist for working with us. So Gary, on behalf of a grateful community, let us give you this certificate for five years and many more years to come. Thanks. And take care of all those elm trees and cotton trees.
This is the 15 year.
All right. Eric. Where's Eric? Here he is. Eric, how you doing? Good. Good to see you in uniform today. Eric, we have a certificate for you for 10 years, but it's really 15. So we're going to get that fixed up for you. You know, it is with Public Works folks, you know, we see you out and around as well. And, you know, from the bottom of our heart, you know, I just have to tell you, it's a, it's just a good feeling for what you folks do. You do it with professionalism, you do it with compassion, you do it with care, and you're everywhere. And I, you know, I know we'd all like to see more folks out there helping, but, you know, with what you do, you do a great job. And so on behalf of a grateful community, Eric, I'd like to give you this certificate for 15 years of service. So thanks. Keep doing it. Come on up here. I don't know this guy. This is 20 years of service. 20 years. Vern, come on up here. You look at that, you got one of those fancy ties on, too. What is that? That's a, what do you call those?
Jerry Garcia.
That's a Jerry Garcia tie. Ah, you know, you've got quite a number of those.
Yes, I do, actually.
Huh? I was going to wear one this morning, but you, you know, that's pretty slick. You know, everybody knows what you do, Vern. You're a planner and you've been involved in many of the things that have made this city a beautiful place to live over the years. And, you know, we just can't thank you enough for what you've done. You probably see the fruits of your labor all the time as you go through this city. So Vern, on behalf of a grateful community, our board would like to give you this longevity award for 20 years and look forward to many more. Thanks, Vern.
Thank you.
And we love your tie.
We'll do this. Do you want to do this now or do you want to do it?
I'm going to do it now. Oh, let's see. We'll take a picture and then we'll do the employee of the quarter.
Any family members that came or coworkers who would like to get in the picture with your...
Anybody? Come on up.
I know Dan's wife is here, but...
This is public humiliation time.
But we do it together.
I'll give you a little hand. I'll have to sit the guys over here.
I don't wipe, really.
That's what I'm coming.
Just the IT guy.
They fired me.
With good reason.
We'll take a couple. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Take care of those kids.
Hey, Gary. You did a good job with those three.
We don't get them often, so we like to...
All right, now we have a special presentation. We'll see, people get out a little bit here. This morning, we're going to award the first Employee of the Quarter Award in Carson City. And let me just say that, you know, during the floods, all of our city employees worked very hard. And then after that, there were a group of restaurateurs, restaurants, that came together under the direction of Charlie Aboud and did a celebration and food for the city and all of its city employees in Mills Park. As part of that, they raised some capital and they donated that capital to Carson City to create this Employee of the Quarter Award. Let me also say that when we gave the raise to the city manager this last year, he also donated part of his raise to create the Employee of the Quarter Award. So we want to thank all those folks for helping get this award off the ground because it's a great thing to do. We have a committee that looks at the employee members, the employee award members or members who should be received these. That's Tracy Ashton, Karen Machado. Where's Karen?
Karen's not there, but your wife is here on behalf of the CCA.
Okay.
And Tracy, can you raise your hand? You are an...
There's Tracy. And Stephanie Hicks, I don't see, there's Stephanie. Not here is Brett Benly of the Sheriff's Association in Byron Hundred, the firefighters. Are they all here? I don't see them. But they were part of the committee that chose the employee of the quarter. And there were two, two people who nominated this employee. And I'd like to call them up, Charlie Riordan of the Office Specialist and Rich Hardcastle, Fleet Services Foreman. So if I could have you come up, I'd like to say a few words about who you nominated and why, and then we'll bring that person up. All right, Charlie.
So collectively, we nominated Hans White, who is a fleet mechanic, obviously at Carson City Fleet Services. And I nominated Hans because along with all of our other mechanics, he works diligently on getting all of the city vehicles out as soon as possible. But not only city vehicles, but he is aware of and respects the importance of our frontline fire apparatus. And he works diligently to get that out the door as soon as possible. And he often works very long hours, lots of overtime. And he does have a family with small children. And so I think that's going the extra mile because he is taking time away from his family to ensure the delivery of that frontline fire apparatus. So, and he does not complain, ever, if he says much at all. He does not complain and he is highly intelligent, highly intelligent. So I think he's a great guy. Does a good job.
I've worked with Hans here with the city and beforehand at Carson Toyota. And I have to say, I have not met another technician that has the diagnostic skills and troubleshooting abilities that he does. And he's always finding ways to save the city money. Recently, he fabricated a test head for the fire department so we could begin testing, pump testing fire apparatus, which would have cost the city thousands. So, and just yesterday, for $7, a piece of sandpaper and a can of clear coat, he made an old set of headlights look new. So, he's a great asset to the city and we're happy to have him. Thanks, Hans.
Hans, can I have you come up? Come on out here in front of us here. Hans, on behalf of a grateful community and our board who are all here, we want to thank you for what you've done for the city. And as you just heard, you've saved, you're not only a great technician, but you've saved the city a lot of money. So this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Carson City's quality of life attracts talented and loyal employees, and whereas every day Carson City employees put to use their broad array of skills and expertise with efficiency and integrity for the benefit of everyone in our city. And whereas Carson City values its employees and acknowledges and recognizes employees for their hard work and dedication, it's critical to the future health and growth of our city. And whereas we owe a substantial debt of gratitude to the Carson City employees and applaud those who go above and beyond in their loyalty and ability, and that's you. Whereas Hans White, senior fleet services technician, saved the city thousands of dollars by fabricating a test manifold and in so doing contributed to the fulfillment of Carson City's mission, values, and vision. Whereas it is an honor to be selected for this award by your coworkers and it speaks highly, highly, of your work performance and how it is perceived by others. Now therefore, Robert Crowell, mayor of Carson City, along with our entire board here and your entire community, celebrate the special trust and confidence in the loyalty, integrity, and ability of Hans White and to hereby proclaim him to be Employee of the Quarter for Carson City and encourage everyone to join in this special recognition. Hans, we give you this, a little something to go on your wall. So if you come up here with us, you want to say anything?
Thank you, but I don't know that I could've done this without the help of everybody in Fleet Services. So everybody has contributed also. Thank you.
I see that. It's a good statement. Come on up here. Come on. Come on up. You get... Come on up where you get...
Can I stand by this family to come?
Hans? Up. Hans, get in the middle here. We'll get in here. Zach, how are you this morning? Good. Yeah, look what your dad did, huh? Yeah, he says, "What's all this? What's going on here?" Huh? Let me sneak over here next to you guys here. Okay, we'll get a picture here. Can I have Hans still stand here, and Charlie, and Rich, come on. All right. You know, I almost overlooked the money. The money. So Hans, to go along with the award, we have for you $200 to take your wife and family out to dinner.
Thank you.
And to those who nominated him, $50.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thanks again for taking the time to do this. It's a great deal. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We're ready.
Congratulations, first one.
So they'll nominate?
Go ahead.
That's true. You and fishing guy.
No, no.
Exactly.
We'll take up the consent agenda. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? I don't see any. Any member of the board? I don't see any motions in order to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda consisting of all items under nine, 10, 11, and 12 on the agenda.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Let's now move on to item number 14. This is for possible action. This relates to possible assistance to low-income property owners. We have, who's gonna do this? Mr. Brukata?
Good morning, Mayor, Board members. David Brukata, for the record. This is a discussion about a low assistance program that has been discussed to offer for the water, sewer, and stormwater funds. And, you know, I'd like to have Supervisor Bagwell and Supervisor Aboud go ahead and lead this, and I'm happy to answer any questions or support what you need.
Who wants to do it first? Okay.
Thank you, David. It's come to our attention that Chapter 12.04 of the CCMC had established a utility rate assistance program for eligible seniors, but that is no longer offered to new applicants because of state budget cuts. And so with our recent rate increases, we do recognize a need. So the UFOC met on September 19th to review and discuss revising 12.04, the senior citizens' assistance, to provide assistance to qualified low-income property owners. So we proposed to achieve the monies to do this through donations, similar to what is offered by Southwest Gas and NV Energy. There's a checkbox, if you'd like to donate a few dollars towards helping someone else out, this is proposed to do the same thing. And this would have no adverse impacts to the water and sewer and stormwater funds, and it seemed to be a great way to do things. There are currently about 110-plus folks getting a percent of a discount on their bills currently, which is actually a revenue loss of about $60,000 to the fund. So, and some, we did discover in going through this process that some of the folks on those, on that list were actually deceased. So it was time to review this. And as I mentioned, donations would supplement this assistance instead of the city providing a percent discount as was currently offered. And this is an annual relief, and letters go out, will go out to folks currently getting that relief, and they will have 90 days to reapply. And this is only to property owners. So I'll let Lori take it up as to how, the thought process in implementation.
Lori.
Okay, thank you. So Karen and I were trying to work hard on how we could implement a program to help residents in need. And one of the things we discovered is there are, as she said, NV Energy and Southwest Gas provide opportunities for people to donate dollars, and we thought that just was a perfect example for us, is when you pay your Carson City utility bill, you could opt to include a few additional dollars, and then we would create a, replace, obviously, this ordinance with new rules on how to access those dollars. And so, as Karen said, it's really a benevolent community that we live in, and I think that we recognize there are those that would like to help, people that are struggling with the bills.
Well, I think our hats off. The UF, the finance, Utility Finance Oversight Committee approved this unanimously, and I know we've got representatives there for that. Members of the public want to weigh in on this? No, let me just say, give a hearty thank you to Supervisor Bagwell and Supervisor Aboud for bringing this forward. This has potential of being a wonderful program, at really no cost to the utility fund or the stormwater fund. And it also has the ability to help those in need who, to weather through what can sometimes be difficult times. So let me just say thank you to both of you for your thoughtful approach to, you see a problem, try to find a way to resolve that problem, you've done a wonderful job. So that's for me, and I don't know if any other board members want to weigh in on this. I don't see anybody. Okay. Want to do a motion then? This is quick. How's that? Who, one of you got, one of, Karen or Lori got to make a motion.
I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance revising Chapter 12.04, the senior citizens' assistance of the Carson City Municipal Code, to provide assistance to low-income property owners that will have no adverse impacts on the water, sewer, and stormwater funds.
There's a motion by Supervisor Aboud, a second by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, and thank you again to both of you for your thoughtful approach to solving issues in our community here. All right. Let's now take up 15. We pulled, the semantics will be coming. Now let's take up 15 Bravo. This is to confirm the appointment of Jason Link to the position of Controller pursuant to Carson City Charter, Section 3.073. Who's doing it? Oh, okay. Morning.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, it is my pleasure to present Jason Link to you here this morning. Jason is currently the CFO in Klamath County, Oregon. He's been in that position for a little over six years now. He is also the elected treasurer of Klamath County, and he's had that position since 2012. Jason's a CPA with over 16 years' experience. He's highly regarded and extremely popular back in Klamath. We're very fortunate to have him here in Carson City. I expect to have Jason here for quite a long time to come, and I'm sure Jason feels the same way. By our charter, the board appoints the Controller position, the city manager appoints with board confirmation of the Controller. A lot of people may wonder, what's the difference between a CFO and a Controller? I have to admit, I didn't know, so I Googled it. So in case you're wondering, what's the difference between a CFO and a Controller? A Controller is a much narrower focus, generally the head of accounting, accounting in a firm or in a local government, things like account payable, maintaining ledgers, and things like that. The CFO is a much broader position, responsible for all the financial requirements of the organization. Typically, and I'm not aware of any case where it hasn't been that way, the Controller here in Carson City is also appointed as the Chief Financial Officer. So it's my pleasure to introduce Jason Link, not only to the board, but to the community. Jason.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be here today.
You bet. You want to say anything, or you want us to grill you first?
You are more than welcome to grill me first.
All right. We're not gonna grill you. But it occurred to me while the city manager was talking that, you know, the difference between a Controller and a CFO is a Controller is just kind of responsible for putting the apples in the apple basket and the oranges in the orange basket. And the CFO has to have a broader view of life and a broader view of, of what's, overview of what's happening in your entire system of finance. It's a very important position, so. And I know I've met with you, and I suspect other board members have met with you as well. So, anybody want to weigh in?
I just want to say thank you and welcome, and we welcome your family with open arms, so glad to have you.
Just a technical issue, because you have not yet been appointed as the CFO, I just want to make sure that we make this appointment subject to your appointment as the CFO.
I think that's a good point. So effective November 1st, I believe, is gonna be the start date.
So I'll include that when we make the motion.
Do both of them. Anybody else? So Jason, you want to say anything now that it looks like you're gonna get blessed here?
I just, I want to thank the community for allowing me to come. It is with kind of a bittersweet departure, leaving Klamath County, but I am excited about being here and serving this community and all that it has to offer. I am extremely excited about it, so, thank you.
Well, you know, one of the things that the CFO has to do is make sure that the sales tax comes in above budget.
I have heard that.
Above budget, and, you know, every month that it doesn't...
Good news, Jason.
You gotta come up with something different.
Yeah, doesn't ring as well.
Yeah, but for me, you'll see, you know, if it comes above budget, you'll be, "Good news, Jason," and if it comes below, it's bad news. It reflects, anyway, we just kid you about that.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody want to, any members of the public? I don't see any. Okay. Anything further from either the city manager or Jason? All right. Motion's in order, Supervisor Monkowski.
I move to confirm the appointment of Jason Link to the position of Controller pursuant to the Carson City Charter, Section 3.073, subject to his, oh, as of, or effective November 1st, 2017, subject to his appointment to Chief Financial Officer, scheduled on November 1st, 2017.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you. Jason?
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
We look forward to seeing you in the office, raising sales tax all the time. All right. We kid you about it. All right. Let's take up item 16. This is a second reading on the stormwater rate increase. Any changes or any comments since the first reading?
For the record, David Brukata, yes, sir, there's been three non-substantive changes with input from Supervisor Aboud and Supervisor Monkowski, the Planning Department, and the DA's office. In those three changes, there should be some late material. I handed out to the clerk. I also put some copies back there. The three changes, on the page three, number seven, it talks about manufacturing property. There was an additional category added called general industrial airport. That was added at the time of the initial review. It's a recent category, it was added within about six months, and so it had not been codified on the online, so we were able to catch that. So, number seven. The other change was number 11, the definition of single-family property. There was just a small oversight where we had missed a couple of the words that were spelled out, and that was single-family, one-acre, conservation resource, agricultural, and then the three mobile home descriptions. So those were just added in as descriptions. And then the very last change is on the last page, page number eight, and on the very last sentence in the top paragraph, it should pay all proposed costs. The word proposed was added to help clarify some of the language and make it a little more clear. Those are the only three changes, non-substantive changes. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
John, Supervisor Barrett.
It's to me like they're non-substantive, but who determined they're non-substantive?
That was input from the District Attorney's Office.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board? Public comment on this one? This is a second reading. Anybody want to thank the community for bearing with us on these issues? It's important in case we, as we go down this road in terms of keeping our community safe on stormwater matters. So, motions in order.
2017-24.
I move to adopt Bill Number 126 on second reading, ordinance number 2017-24, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Carson City Municipal Code to increase the rate of stormwater service charges levied upon all developed real property located within Carson City, to revise provisions establishing the procedure by which to protest stormwater service charges and fees, and to make non-substantive changes to provide technical, grammatical, and structural corrections for legal clarity.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you, David. Let's now take up 16 Bravo. This is the Curry Street issue. I'll let you folks discuss. Who do we have today? Oh, we got the engineer and Loomis and, all right, Dan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Supervisors, I'll pull up the presentation.
Looks like you got the potted plant for Darren Schultz there, too. He's hiding over there under the...
Okay, Darren.
It's like Mars. It's red.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, yeah. Good morning. Dan Stuckey, city engineer, for the record. Today, we're gonna talk about the downtown Curry Streetscape project. I'm joined here by Mike Bennett. He's the Director of Engineering with Loomis and Associates and the lead engineer on this project. And we have utilized the construction manager at risk delivery process for this project, which means we have the contractor on board during the design, and Jeff Bean represents Q&amp;D Construction. He's the vice president over there. So they're here to join us today to go through this presentation. So today, we're just gonna give a little background, a little bit on the history of kind of how we got to this point today with this project, where we are, and then also kind of our anticipated schedule moving forward to complete this project. We'll give a very high-level overview of some of the project elements. And there's a figure there that kind of shows, it's a little bit difficult to see, but the project incorporates Curry Street improvements from Mustard to Robinson, which is shown in the yellow there, and then also the cross streets between Carson and Curry. There's five cross streets, and then an alleyway between Telegraph and Spear Street. So all those improvements are gonna be incorporated into this project. We'll also finalize with discussing kind of where we are, where we are at today with the 60% design cost estimate, and also some of available funding sources moving forward. So a little background on the project. I'm a little bit new to this, but I believe, you know, conceptually, the project was probably formulated before 2014, but really, it started to move in 2014. That's when the team was formulated and started to really move forward. Now, the project was the downtown Streetscape project that time, which included the Carson Street improvements and also the Curry Street improvements. So in 2015, the design team was assembled. Those projects were both advanced at 60% design, and the plan at that point, from the beginning, was to always split at 60% the Curry Street from the Carson Street, move Carson Street forward, construct that in 2016, and then at a later date, bring Curry Street forward and construct that. So 2016, Carson Street was constructed. So 2017, probably in about August, we kind of have a re-kickoff meeting on... Jeff went out and met with the businesses along the corridor, gave them an update on where the project was, what the anticipated schedule was. It was actually really refreshing, because I think most of the people that we just talked to there were very happy with what went on on Carson Street. And so the way we explained the project is, you know, we're basically having very similar types of improvements on Carson, on Curry Street as we did on Carson Street, so there was a lot of support there. The only real concerns that we got were related to parking, and that was mostly associated with long-term day parking for employees, which this project will not impact. The other issue was obviously the impacts during construction to their businesses. And, you know, I'm pretty happy with, we have the same team that we had during Carson, so it was kind of cool being out there with Mike and Jeff, because many of the owners, the business owners already knew them from dealing with them on Carson Street, so it's a very experienced team. There's some lessons learned from the way it was done on Carson that I think we can apply, and I think that coordination will be really solid moving forward. So our plan is to finalize design in early 2018, start construction hopefully in the spring, and there'll be public outreach throughout with that coordination between the various businesses along the corridor. So just, again, a high-level overview of some of the components, we're at the 60% design level, but essentially, I think the best way to explain it is the Curry Street improvements are going to look very similar to the Carson Street improvements. You're going to have, you know, the pavers, the furnishings, the landscaping, redo the sidewalks, some paving on the street. So those types of improvements will be, will be the focus of the Curry Street improvements.
Dan, can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Yes.
Who will be doing the landscaping? Because we had some issues with Signature, so I just want to know who that part of the team will be.
For the record, Jeff Bean with Q and D, that hasn't been determined yet, we have to get to the closer to the 100% plans and go out to bid.
I'll just, I'll just jump in, that with the C Mar process, so that will be bid, it's an open bid process, the city is at the table with the contractor and the designer, but with C Mar, we're allowed to select the low subcontractor or not. And so, part of that selection will be based on price, and part of that selection may be based on prior experience and history.
Dan, if, I may be jumping ahead in your presentation, but when you get to utilities, can you go into some pretty fine detail there into what is included in this, including replacing water and sewer, undergrounding the electrical, replacing the streetlights and the improved lighting?
Yes, we will, we will definitely address that later on.
He's got his screen. That's better, much better color.
Oh, yeah, that is, that is much better, okay. If you could go to the one before that? Yeah. So, when we completed the 60% design, that was back in 2015, and so there was a couple other items that we wanted to include in the design moving forward that we feel are very necessary and important, and we recommend them moving forward. One of them, and we refer to them as additives, so additive number one is to underground the power. There are basically a couple items, I think aesthetics is basically the most critical thing, why we think this would be a benefit. You know, obviously, the point of this project is to beautify downtown and get people to want to come down there, enjoy the day down there, shop, eat, and, you know, something about having these power poles in the middle of the sidewalk just kind of takes away from that a little bit. So aesthetics is a very big focus. I didn't explain, but on the figure there, you can see the red dots and red lines, that's the stretch of power lines, overhead power lines there along Curry. The other thing is safety and reliability, I mean, I think, you know, falling power lines can happen, power outages happen during extreme weather events, so undergrounding the power produces more reliable power source. So additive number one, we definitely recommend incorporating the design moving forward.
Dan, when we did Carson Street, we upgraded the power in that there were very few outlets available, and the amperage of the total service, is that going to happen on Curry Street as well?
I believe so. I don't know if you want to add anything, but yes, that's, that will be included.
Yeah, Mike Bennett, again, for the record, the intent of the 60% right now is to mirror what we did on Carson Street, which is expand event power, more circuits, and so on.
Are there more power poles than just the ones in that sector? Or that's it, on that whole Curry Street section?
Within the project limits, that's it. I believe they do stretch further to the north along Curry, correct? Yeah.
Okay.
So next slide, please. So the next additive is that, I don't know if you guys know this, I wasn't aware of this, but there's a stretch of gas lights, streetlights along Curry Street from Washington to Second. I kind of thought it was pretty fascinating, but they bring with it a lot of problems. Number one is the light output that they produce is just, doesn't meet the minimum, and there's been a lot of complaints in that area, just, they don't produce light. And actually, we had to go out there for a light inspection for some other stuff downtown, and I had our engineer go out with a light meter to test what they are, and the LED lights on Carson Street produce about 30 to 40 times more light output than these gas streetlights. So that gives you a little, a little background on really the necessity to upgrade these gas lights. The other thing is that they're really just a maintenance nightmare. I've talked with our maintenance staff, they're out there a minimum of once a month replacing or repairing the mantles, unclogging the gas lines. So we estimate probably if we, if we install LED lights, it's going to be about an 80% reduction in maintenance hours. So obviously, that's a big priority. So again, that's another additive that we feel is very important to include in the design moving forward. Next slide, please. So when this downtown Streetscape project was formulated in, you know, 2014-ish, there was never really a formal plan for the cross streets in between Curry and Carson, and RAC has allocated about $550,000 to address these cross streets and kind of create like a unified, uniform downtown corridor there, and tie Carson Street and Curry Street together. So, there's about, I believe, $550,000, it's essentially $100,000 per cross street, so it's Spear, Telegraph, Proctor, Musser, Robinson, and then also there's an alleyway between Telegraph and Spear. So, next slide, please. So we've not started design on this, and again, there's $100,000, so the types of improvements won't be at the same level as they will be with Carson and Curry Street. We're a little limited there, but we think we can do some really great things in order to tie the projects together, and here's a couple of examples. So, you know, some pavers, planer walls and seat walls, emblems and icons, and some furnishings there, again, to just kind of help beautify those cross streets and bring everything Next slide, please. Great. So here's a breakdown of, we'll get into the cost and funding, but here's a breakdown of the 2015 estimate. So again, this is almost three years ago now. At that point, the project estimate was around $2 million. If you go to the next slide, please. So here's the updated estimate. So you see two columns there, one is without the additives that I discussed, the underground power and the LED lights, and one's with the additives. So really, the primarily different, primary difference in cost is associated with, you know, obviously, there's a change in construction prices over a three-year period, so we've updated the cost estimate to reflect that. We've also, you can see the $550,000 from RAC for those cross streets, and then on the additive side, there's also the amounts for, you know, the underground of the power, and then the LED lights. So, so that's the idea of where we are with the cost estimate. Again, we highly recommend proceeding, advancing forward with the additives, we feel those are very important to include. And then the next slide talks about funding, and so here's kind of the available funding from the infrastructure tax fund. I'm going to let Nancy take this slide over and break it down.
Nancy Paulson, deputy city manager. So just to go over the funding that's available in the infrastructure tax fund, it's from sales tax revenue from fiscal 15 through fiscal 18. That's the amount of revenue that's in excess of what was needed to pay the debt service payments. The $851,000 is from the original bond proceeds in fiscal year 15, and then a little over $200,000 is just from project savings from other completed infrastructure projects. And then the remaining projects within the plan of expenditures will be funded from $7 million in new bond proceeds that will be issued, I think, around 2019.
Nancy, given the way sales tax been coming in, should that continue? Is this going forward, or is this just to date? In other words, is there going to be more, or could we expect more?
So if good news, Jason, continues?
No problem.
There will be more, but the amounts that I have, the $2,273,000 are, is revenue that we've already collected and what we've estimated for fiscal 18. So this doesn't take into account anything, any excess in the future.
Yeah, but that does include what you expect to have come in? Or is that based on old figures, the 4%?
Yeah, so that's based on our estimate of the 4% increase for fiscal 18, but the bulk, that's about $600,000, $623,000, and then the remainder, we already have sitting in the infrastructure tax fund, because it's from fiscal 15 through 17.
Should it keep coming in at the elevated rate, well above the 4%, could there be more money to allocate to those cross streets?
Yes, and then we could also potentially issue more in, in bonds.
And so one of the great things we have is, because good news on the sales tax, I won't say good news, Nancy, but the sales tax coming in a little better than expected. It's nice that we were able to keep $625,000 in the street fund to meet other needs in the community, so I'm very pleased to see that we're able to use the infrastructure account to meet the needs for the redesigns of these streets and keep the money, for redesign of the streets in the street fund, yeah, but anyway, to keep the 625 in the street fund to meet other needs in the community, so let's just keep hoping for good news. Jason?
You see, it's already your fault if it goes bad.
So, going back to the question that I asked earlier, if you could go into a little bit of detail on the amount of work that's going to be done on the water and sewer and storm drainage work in this project, and then I have a question, I'll come back to the funding.
Yeah, I apologize to Supervisor Monkowski for not addressing that. So if we could go back, I don't know if we can get, okay.
This is why they took the camera away from.
If you want to go back up to maybe the, like, third slide, that had, I think, the second slide, excuse me. There, or, sorry, keep going. Right there. So Supervisor Monkowski, so there is, there will be, yes, utility upgrades. There is a water line that runs basically the length of Curry Street, that's old and needs to be upgraded, so that's included in this project. There's also some sewer lines that are old clay pipes that run east-west, crossing Sewer Street in numerous locations, so those will be upgraded along with this. And then also some storm drain connections along the corridor will be upgraded.
Are there still elevation issues with the east-west sewer lines, or it might have been water lines? There were some elevation issues when we did Carson Street, like the lines weren't where they were supposed to be, and some of them just kind of dead-ended, and some of them went places that they were supposed to.
Yeah, it was more, it was more about them just being very, very old and us not having good, real good records on them, so they were, some of them were really shallow, and we struggled with that. When we replaced a chunk, we had to chase it further east or west to tie it in. So the idea is to, is to continue that to the west on the cross streets and then up across Curry, so it's overall, it's really going to improve the downtown, especially the sanitary sewer system.
And that's kind of what I'm trying to get to in a very poor way, is how, how much do you think that this is going to save you in time and maintenance from a public works perspective by, you know, doing this project in addition to what we did in Carson Street? You know, obviously, we're addressing a portion of our city that has some really poor water and sewer lines.
Yeah, that cannot be overstated. It's because of the, because of the age of the system down there, we're down there a lot, cleaning them out, cambering. The real advantage is getting rid of that old material, the clay, and putting in plastic pipe, I mean, that's just, that's such a positive. The other advantage with doing it as part of this project, if we go down just as a sewer project and have to dig up the street and replace a line and then patch the street back, and so by doing it all holistically, it's just, it's a huge advantage. In terms of hours that, you know, that we spend down there in that system, I don't, I don't know that offhand. I do know, though, that we're down there on a regular basis, lining out these, these lines and, you know, fixing clogs, that sort of thing. So the idea of putting new material for pipes, upsizing in some locations, getting the flow to match, so it doesn't, you know, all drain towards a manhole and stop there, it's going to be huge.
And then if we can go back to the funding, if you could go into a little more detail on the remaining projects in the plan of expenditure, how much revenue we currently are anticipating, and what we're estimating that we're going to need? I just kind of want to get a picture of what gaps we still have.
There we, there we go. So, when, when the program, the infrastructure tax program was put together, 2012-ish, that sort of thing, there was, there was a number of projects that were included that would be addressed as this went forward. The projects have not changed, what has changed is the timing of the projects, and also the, kind of the scope and the extent of the project. So, we finished, we finished about, we're about halfway done with, with the total number of projects, and I think we've spent roughly $12 million so far. So the remaining projects that we have left, South Carson, North Carson, William Street, and the Community Center remodel. So the South Carson Street, we've, there used to be a Central Carson Street, which was the, was the section from Fifth Street down to Fairview, so that was Central Carson Street, and then the South Carson was from Fairview down to the new freeway. So we've now lumped that into one project, we're calling it South Carson Street Project, and we were here two weeks ago asking to go forward for a Tiger grant for that project. Right now, we have about $11 million allocated in city funds for South Carson Street, and we, our estimate is at about $18 million for that project. That includes the utilities, that includes the NDOT money, everything is in there, so our Tiger grant was for approximately seven, just over $7 million that we're asking for Tiger, from Tiger. If that gets funded, if that Tiger grant gets funded, we're good on South Carson in terms of funding, that project is, is done, it's not part of what you see here today. Then, steps forward would be, we need to fund the North Carson Street corridor, the William Street corridor, and then the Community Center remodel. So what Nancy was discussing is, we still have, we always planned to sell a second bond against these expenditures. Right now, we estimate that that bond could be about $7 million, based on what's, what we're spending now and what's coming in. And so then we, we need to, we would need to decide with that $7 million, come back and have a discussion here in terms of priority, as to what projects go next. If you'll remember the William Street project, we were awarded a grant, Greening America's Capitals, and so a consultant came in, and it was about a $350,000 grant, for a consultant to come in and do a master plan design of William Street, and that was wonderful, and it, it, community involvement, so we have a design out there, now we're just looking for funding. But for instance, William Street, with that design that was proposed, that's about $10 million. We'll wait and see what happens with that grant. If we get all of it or if we get some of it, then we would have to come back before you and have a discussion on South Carson. And then the next step is, okay, now we have these three remaining projects. We have this amount of money. Where do we put our resources next?
So potentially if we don't get the Tiger grant, we may have to use the $7 million gap from the bond. I mean, that's our fallback if we don't get the Tiger? Because we have to complete.
We have to get the Tiger.
I like your answer, but I know it's highly competitive. So let's just hope Carson City's successful in the Tiger grant. But, but we really don't know that we have South Carson complete yet in the funding.
That's correct. And then the discussion would have to be made is do we, do we do South Carson and leave Middle Carson out, which is the way we originally kind of planned the projects? I mean, it really, you want to connect them together because we have great stuff going downtown, but that would be the discussion we'd have here.
This is kind of off the wall, but goes back to the existing project we're talking about, Curry. I know on the Carson Street Project at some point, and you probably can't do this yet since we're not 100% down the road on Curry. But could you, in the future, provide us with the same breakout on what's going underground and what's going beautification above ground on the Curry Street Project? I don't recall the exact figures. I wasn't on the board then, but I do remember you did do that breakout. So it'd be nice to have some, a similar look at it. Because a lot of this, or maybe you do know, but a lot of this is underground and, and that has to be emphasized for the public. It's not just a pretty face.
Yes, so we can, we will definitely do that. We'll be back here. The plan is to come back here at 90% design and we will have that broken out for you.
As I mentioned last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, I think it's important for us on both the Tiger Grant and the William Street Grant that we do what we can at the national level. And so my suggestion to the city manager is see if he can find a way to get some boots on the ground in DC just for a year so that we can see if we can push both these grants hard. These are ones where, you know, we really need them. And I think if we can get it, it's money well spent. For example, one of the things on Tiger Grants that we've kind of overlooked in the past is that there's actually a way where you can have your congressional member ask for your Tiger Grant application to be reviewed prior to moving down the road. We've never done that in the past, but I think we need somebody, not just our congressional delegation and our governor who've already inked in, to be the boots on the ground in DC just for these, for, for the Greening of America Capital, the $10 million and the Tiger Grant. Because those are important for us. All right? Anything else? Good job, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dan is also in the leadership program this year. How'd you do yesterday?
It was good, yeah, it was great. We learned a lot about, obviously, the other classmates and even about ourselves a little bit. So it was, it was a good, good day.
And purple lights.
Yeah.
We learned that too.
Very cool, yeah.
Members of the public want to weigh in on this issue? Thoughts? I don't see anybody. Okay, are we ready? Let's take a moment, see where we go on it.
I move to authorize staff to advance the 60% design of the downtown Curry Streetscape Project and approve the request to transfer funds in the amount of $1,336,000 from the infrastructure tax fund to construct the project as currently designed.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion.
I'd like to just say, as Ronnie Hanneman has reminded us on many occasions, who has been our chairman of RAC, this needs to be done right. Our downtown is really much better and this will, it won't complete at all. We'll just keep working on it. But this is a good key element to making our downtown a beautiful place. There's nothing wrong with a pretty face, by the way.
And Mr. City Manager, we got the frontage road issue. I mean, it has nothing to do with Curry, but you know, in front of the armory, who owns that now?
So I think, Mr. Mayor, let me just back up a little bit to make sure that not only the board, but the public knows exactly what we're talking about. There was an article in the, in the appeal about a week ago about the old armory property on South Carson. One of our key issues there was the ownership of the frontage road. Specifically, we needed to have that part of that frontage road that's immediately adjacent to the armory property transferred to the city along with the rest of the frontage road. That way we can do our South Carson Street Project. So State Lands has replied back to us. The information we had was that State Lands owned, I'm sorry, yeah, State Lands owned that parcel. State Lands came back and said, no, NDOT owns the parcel. A little bit counter to the information that we had in our database. So it doesn't appear at this point as if there's going to be any hangup in us getting that parcel, that frontage road. We're still working with them on potential development opportunities or divestment opportunities. I think that would be very important for the city. The economy is in good shape right now. That, I believe, is a very desirable commercial property. We're still working with them. Frankly, I'm not, I'm not extremely confident we're going to, we're going to get anywhere at this point. It is reserved for the Department of Public Safety. But we are continuing to work with them for any type of a scenario, even if they split off part of the parcel. We think it's not only a valuable piece of real estate, but that it's also a fairly blighted, fairly blighted property on the main southern corridor coming into town, so.
But that, but that, the, the, the old armory parcel is separate and distinct from the frontage road.
Separate and distinct. There's actually three different parcels that make up that whole property. One of them is literally the frontage road itself. And we believe we're, we're, we're not going to have any problem in getting that, that parcel from the state.
And we've, let me put some words in your mouth. We've told the state that we will design, you know, regardless of what happens, we'll design the ingress and egress, the ramps in and out of that property, however they want to do it, regardless of who owns that piece.
We have done that, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Anything else, Board? All right. All right. Further discussion? On a motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you. All right. All right. All right, so let's take up 17A, 17B and then see how that goes and then we'll take a break. 17A? Oh, here we go. Who's doing it? You got your, you're still CFO and controller and all that stuff, right? You're deputy too, right?
Yeah, for another, what, a couple of weeks?
All right, go.
All right. Nancy Foster, Deputy City Manager. And I have Ryan Henry with Sherman and Howard and John Peterson with J&amp;A. They've been here quite a bit lately. So this first item is to adopt a resolution concerning the financing of sewer and drainage projects and to direct notice to the Debt Management Commission of the city's intent to issue general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $4,875,000. So these bonds will be used for capital projects that were identified in the 10-year Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan. This is a 20-year bond with estimated annual debt service payments of $370,000.
Okay, we discussed this when we went through the budget. All right. Want to add anything? How are the interest rates doing today?
Interest rates have been pretty good. Maybe for some background here, on Tuesday, the state of Nevada sold five, I believe it was five series of bonds through, through their various projects. One of the projects that they funded was some sewer improvements for Carson City. The state acted as a conduit issuer for us. They issued the bonds, they have better ratings, therefore get better interest rates and then pass on those savings to Carson City. So a lot of appreciation to the state. But what we saw in the results of those, for those sewer bonds, our 20-year cost of financing, the $6 million bond issue was about 2.7%. So a very awesome interest rate, lower than, than we anticipated and even a little bit lower, I think, when I came to the board about a month ago as we were adopting our, our ordinance, just a little bit lower than what we were estimating at the time. So we had a good confluence of interest rates that declined over the last week as well as just stronger demand for the bonds than we anticipated. So, so very good interest rates. Switching over to this project, we're estimating that the interest rate on these is about 4.4%. Now you say, well, you know, 2.7 on the recent one, 4.4, why such a difference? We are being a little bit conservative here. We're, we're not going to be able to issue bonds for about five months as we go through the process that needs to happen in order to issue these things. And there still are some, some items out there that could impact interest rates. Certainly one of those is, is federal tax law changes. Because you issue bonds that are tax exempt, your bonds are highly influenced by the tax rate levied by the federal government. And with discussions of lowering that tax rate from 35% to say 20% has, has a big mark on the interest rates that you would receive. Even if nothing else changed, even if US Treasury rates stayed exactly the same, your, your interest rates would go higher. So we're being a little bit conservative there. And really what we want to do is when we're making these findings in presentation to the Debt Management Commission, say, look, we're trying to be conservative. The interest rates that we have are conservative. As well as just barring all that, we still have plenty of revenues within the, the storm water and the sewer systems to repay these bonds. So that's kind of my, my response on interest rates. And again, I'd love to answer any other questions about this particular project, but this is just the first step. And we will be back, not only to the Debt Management Commission, hopefully within the next 30 days, but back to the board before the end of the calendar year. And then back again sometime in, in February or March for an actual adoption of a, of a bond ordinance to issue these bonds.
If you know, does the tax reform that's being bandied about in Washington DC now affect, that's the wrong way of saying, would it remove the non-taxability of municipal bonds? Is that, is that included or not?
And I apologize, just for the record, John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group, I don't think I, I mentioned that earlier. I have not heard in the current proposal that's, that's going around in Congress that it would eliminate the deductibility of interest for municipal bonds. The discussions have been around, obviously, reducing federal tax rates and also reducing some exemptions to personal income taxpayers such as state and local property and income taxes, deducting that from, you know, your federally taxable income. But so far, nothing specific to municipal bonds.
All right, thank you. All right. Board members, anything else? John, anybody?
No, but I would compliment you on asking that question because of course, not only tax reform, but the Federal Reserve is going to impact our interest rates going forward since they're through with their quantitative easing and are now in the quantitative tightening. But that municipal exemption is, is really a bedrock of how cities can get along. So we need to be vigilant on that as well as what we can do on the Tiger Grant.
Yeah. Well, if you see something like that happening, we might want to put our foot on the gas.
Absolutely, Mayor Corral. I agree with you if there is a proposal. And there have been proposals in the past to eliminate the exemption for municipal bonds. I, I think it's something that's, that's very important to the city. Obviously, when you derive your financing cost because your bonds are exempt from income taxation, there's a lot of value there. And so, yeah, if there was a proposal, we would, we would want to keep you apprised of it. And I would assume the city would want to make some presentation or, or discussion with its congressional and, and senatorial leaders.
Okay, all right. Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. We've talked about this, now it's the first step in moving this forward. Any other questions on the board? Let's see if we can do a motion to send us to the Debt Management Commission, get their take on what's going on.
Resolution number?
2017R36.
I move to adopt Resolution 2017-R36, a resolution concerning the financing of sewer projects, directing the clerk to notify the Carson City Debt Management Commission of the city's proposal to issue general obligation sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,875,000, provided certain details in connection therewith and providing the effective date.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay, well, let's take up the corollary issue of hiring bond counsel, which we always have to do on these things. It's quite a deal to have bond counsel. I wish I'd have gone into bond counsel 40 years ago, man. We've, we've had very good relations with Sherman and Howard over the years. This is an agenda item to hire the services of Sherman and Howard for the bond that we just talked about. Public comment, anybody? We need to do these things, folks. As much as I may kid everybody, unless you have bond counsel, you're putting yourself out for liability. Board members, any? All right, let's do a motion, get Sherman and Howard in here and then we'll take a break. Motion? Anybody want to do it?
I move to confirm the engagement of Sherman and Howard as bond counsel to Carson City, Nevada in connection with the issuance of $4,875,000 Carson City, Nevada, general obligation sewer drainage bond series 2017 for a total not to exceed amount of $70,000 to be funded from bond proceeds.
There's a motion and a second on a motion. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thanks much, both of you. Keep an eye on it, let us know, okay? We'll watch what goes on to the Debt Management Commission. You watch what's going on in DC.
Absolutely, we will keep you apprised.
All right, thanks. All right. All right, let's take a break for about 10 minutes and we'll see where we go from there. and we'll see where we go from there.
... requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve as the president of the Greenhouse Project Board, a nonprofit organization. The Greenhouse Project is under contract with CTH to provide staffing for their foothill garden on their campus. The food that the staff grows will be donated to the Carson City Meals on Wheels program. The Ethics Commission has opined that where there is a relationship that is substantially similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship, there exists a disqualifying conflict. Here, my relationship through the Greenhouse Project with Carson Tahoe Hospital is similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship. Therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by this commitment, and as such, I will be abstaining from participating in this matter.
Correct.
Next. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. Bruce Robertson is a broker in my real estate office, and he has in the past represented Carson Tahoe Hospital and its real estate transactions. Cheryl Evans, my business partner, manages a portfolio of hospital properties, and my other business partner, Andy Wilson, and I both serve on Carson Tahoe Citizen Advisory Board. Because of these relationships, a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by these commitments. Therefore, I will also be abstaining from participating in this matter. And this applies to Agenda Items 17C, D, E, and F.
Yeah.
Same for me.
Same. The disclosures apply to all those. 17C, D, E, and F, I'll deal with the hospital. Okay.
Laurie and I feel left out.
A good one to be left out of.
Well, all right, we're going to open a hearing. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open a hearing on discussion regarding the proposed issuance of hospital revenue bonds and hospital revenue refunding bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing and refinancing a portion of the costs of constructing and equipping certain health and care facilities and certain supplemental facilities for health and care facilities owned and operated by Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare and paying the related costs. Nancy, you going to do this? These are, this is kind of what I call a pass-through. They're using our credit to do these things, but there's no liability to the city designers, none. No out-of-pocket costs, nothing. You want to take it from there?
That's correct. Do you want me?
Oh, we got the bond counsel on JNA again. Okay. All right, guys.
So this part is just a public hearing pursuant to NRS 244A in Section 147 of the Internal Revenue Code concerning the proposed issuance of hospital revenue and hospital revenue refunding bonds. And just like I think you said, already said, for the purpose of financing and refinancing the cost of constructing and equipping health and care facilities on facilities owned and operated by the Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare. And the notice of this public hearing was published in the Nevada Appeal on October 4th, 2017.
Very good. Hearing's open. Okay.
Just John.
Set the groundwork for what, you know, what we're doing here in the public hearings. We'll take public comment at the same time, but just so everybody knows what's going on, give us the high level and the.
Absolutely. John Peterson with JNA Consulting Group. So as Nancy explained, this is a public hearing, so it's the board's opportunity under Nevada and federal law to take comments that are required before the board can act as a conduit issuer on behalf of the hospital to issue tax-exempt bonds. Tax-exempt bonds are only available to state and local governments to issue, even though the hospital is a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt entity, the only way that they can issue tax-exempt bonds is if the city is a conduit on their behalf. And so this is something that we are doing for the hospital, and I think a couple of the questions were, what cost is there to the city? And there is none. There's an agreement between the hospital and Carson City for any costs associated with issuing these bonds that the hospital would pay those either out of proceeds of the bonds or from their own revenues. And I think the other comment I would make is that from the perspective of risks to the city, there is no financial risk to the city. If for some reason the bonds were issued and then there was a payment default, it's very clear in the upcoming bond documents that the city is not responsible for that payment default. It's solely on the hospital, as well as I think the only real risk is reputational, just because you'd have a newspaper article that says bankruptcy in Carson City, that would really be the only risk. And again, it's not a financial one.
Yeah, cool.
For the record, Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard. I guess I'd just like to point out, I know last time we were here, there were some questions about details of the project. Mike Pavlakas, general counsel of the hospital, and Ann Beck, CFO of the hospital, are both here today, and, you know, I don't want to steal their thunder, but they'd be available to give some more details regarding the project should the board have them.
And you're our bond counsel as well as theirs.
I'm actually the city's bond counsel, and Mike represents the hospital. But, you know, in a conduit deal like this, the city still needs its bond counsel because the city's actually the issuer, even though the hospital is obligated to repay.
Right, I just want to make sure that you're representing us, and so what you're saying, I get that we got Mr. Pavlakas and folks back there, but you're representing us in this matter.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, yeah. What I want to just put out there is, yep, they would be the better ones to answer details on the project.
No, I got you. We'll see if they want to do that or need to do that. This is a public hearing. They might want to do it, but, okay. And you confirm as bond counsel that there's no risk liability and no financial liability?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under the bond documents and also Chapter 244A for this type of transaction, there's no pecuniary liability to the city or its officers, nor is it created debt, you know, or a charge against the city's general credit. The bond documents are clear and the law is clear that the city's not pledging anything to repayment. The sole repayment source is coming from revenues of the hospital and the project.
Just got handed a note.
Yes, I'll save the note for later.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
Sorry about that.
You know, this is an accommodation to the hospital, and, you know, in my view, it's one of those accommodations that, you know, the city should be doing in a sense, because the hospital's an integral part of the healthcare system we have here, and it behooves us all to make sure that, you know, we have a fully functioning and financially stable hospital in here, so we'll go from there. All right. Any questions of either bond counsel or JNA?
Not bond counsel or JNA.
All right. Let's take, Mr. Pavlakas, you guys want to come up and talk to us about what you're doing, then we'll take further public comment.
Good morning.
Thanks, Mike. I would like to start by telling you my name is Ann Beck. I'm the chief financial officer for Carson Tahoe, and I have been for the last 10 years. I'd like to give you a little background on what landed us here today with this particular bond issuance. In 2002, Carson Tahoe became its own 501(c)(3), a not-for-profit, taking on the debt and assets that were previously owned by the city. After the 2002 501(c)(3), the hospital determined that it needed to grow and expand in order to continue to serve the needs of the community. And over the course of 2003 through 2005, the hospital took on in excess of $100 million in debt to acquire the land and build a campus where the hospital sits today. The last 10 years, we have been very diligent in deleveraging and paying down the debt, having defeased the debt on the old campus and having defeased earlier debt on the current campus and refinanced those particular bonds. Today, 10 years later, well, 12 years later now, the campus has needs to expand to continue to meet the needs of the community. We are seeking $60 million, a little over $60 million in new monies, and I'll describe what those expansions are. And we're also seeking a refunding of some of the existing debt because of the current market, the rates that we are able to get, and it provides the hospital with an opportunity to lower its cost of debt, which is very important. Over the last 10 years, all of our expansions at the facility and all of our capital needs have been met through operations and have run about $16 million a year. The hospital is in a very strong financial position with operating margins currently at the 10%, when around the country, hospitals are running around 2% and 4%. We've been very diligent in not raising our rates and in focusing on our operations and operating as efficiently and effectively as possible. And we feel that at this time, because of the strength of the hospital, the needs of the community, and the current market environment, that going out for new debt is just the right time. What we intend to do with $60 million, the single largest item is a $20 million expansion. For those of you who have been on the campus, we have Sierra Surgery, and then we have the large main hospital. We want to create an outcropping of the regional medical center and then a bridge across that creek to Sierra. This is important because it will allow us to more effectively use those 15 beds at Sierra rather than put patients in ambulance and drive them around Medical Parkway. And it will also extend the useful life of the campus and reduce the need for us to have to build a tower in any near term. It will allow us to expand Sierra Surgery's footprint, which is far easier than adding a tower to the existing hospital. That particular project is just under $21 million. We're also looking for an expansion of our emergency department with an estimated cost of $7.1 million. We're looking to expand our Sierra Surgery, which I just talked about, at a cost of approximately $5 million. We have our cancer center that we will also be expanding. We want to relocate our PET scanner at an estimated cost of $3.2 million. That will provide a cohesive area where all cancer services are provided. We will also expand, this is really exciting because it's happening right now, and we would reimburse ourselves from this new money. We have just acquired robotic surgery suite and will be implementing that, and that's a very exciting proposition, not only because of the delivery of care, but also that increases Carson Tahoe's ability to continue to recruit highly proficient surgeons to our area because all the young doctors learn on robots, and that's an important thing to have for us to be able to recruit. We will have expansion of our ambulatory recovery surgery center at a cost of $1.1 million, and the remaining approximately $20 million, we'll use that to replace and introduce new medical technology.
Thank you, Ann. Mike, you want to add anything?
There's nothing I have to add to that. I think you've all seen the facility. It's something we can be very proud of, and this expansion is just going to make this facility a shining star for our community.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing. Anybody want to weigh in from the public? Questions? Everybody's used the hospital, huh? All right, all right, all right. Well, then, we'll, I think we'll just close the public hearing here, then a few folks will just stay at the table. We'll take up, I think that's all I have to do here, is just close the public hearing. We'll take up 17 Delta. This is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of hospital revenue bonds in the amount of not to exceed $61,695,000. We just heard the use of those proceeds by Ann Beck. Further questions or concerns?
Just a general understanding for the public is, why isn't the hospital issuing its own, why is the conduit of Carson City necessary? Is it because we can get a more favorable rate as a city? I mean, I just would like the public to understand why the city's involved in the transaction.
It's my understanding. Well, to issue debt on our own and that we have to work with the city, and we're grateful that you can serve as a conduit for us to take on that debt.
So without the city, this could not happen?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted it on the record.
Yeah, they can't issue tax-exempt bonds.
Right. They could issue bonds, just not tax-exempt bonds.
Right.
Right, so again, a more favorable rate, which helps keep healthcare costs and expansion at a minimum.
That's our sincere hope.
And actually, I think, you know, John's got a question too, but without the city's participation, the hospital wouldn't be there right now, because we facilitated the building those bonds back then.
Absolutely correct.
In the first place. That's, you know, all right. So, Suvaize Barrett.
Yeah, I think my question's more for Nancy and bond counsel, but I just want to reiterate that we're not on a hook in any way, shape, or form if this went south for some reason. I can't see it going south, but nevertheless, for any potential exigency, no one can see the future. We are not on a hook in any way, shape, or form, right?
That's correct, and it's in NRS, I have the, I think it's 244 that states that.
Like Laurie, I just wanted that on the public record verbally, so anyone watching knows.
I get a little concerned when I see the lawyers out there huddling. Need time? Need anything?
For the record, again, Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard. I walked in late, but the statute that Nancy is referring to is NRS 244A.713, and that'll also be in the bonds themselves, the statement about the city having no liability. So I just want to put that out there for the record. I guess also for the record, I just had a phone call with my colleague, Dave Lucas, who also works at Sherman &amp; Howard, and, you know, we're aware that District Attorney's Office has an opinion regarding a quorum and two votes counting as a majority, but, you know, as bond counsel, we have to give an unqualified opinion on $110 million. And so Dave just wanted me to put on the record that at this point, without looking at the analysis and getting comfortable, I'm not saying that we won't get comfortable, but we aren't necessarily certain that we'll be comfortable moving forward on these resolutions with only two votes today.
You'll have three.
If, should they vote. I thought three were abstaining if they vote. Okay.
Three votes.
Okay, so I guess, you know, you can, yeah.
You're comfortable then. You got three.
If the board chooses to move forward, yes, we would be very comfortable with three votes. That was where I was going to next, and I apologize for being outside.
We won a court case with two votes. Karen and I did, so we're used to it.
Yes, and I don't mean, I'm not disagreeing with Adriana. I just, you know, we just learned of it, and I just was going to put that out there if it was two, but if it's three and the board chooses to move forward, yes, as bond counsel, we would be comfortable giving our opinion.
So one of us could make you very nervous if we voted.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, just for those people that are watching also, I just want to say that under the ethics law, if you have a written opinion from your legal counsel with regard to abstentions, it reduces the quorum as if those members who are abstaining weren't even on the board of supervisors. It's as if the board of supervisors was made up of three members.
I don't know if you heard, but I disclosed, and I don't have a conflict there, so I'm going to vote. Okay?
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Adriana.
And mine was based upon talking with counsel. Okay, all right. All right. Anything else? Anything else to make us uncomfortable? All right. Let's take a motion then.
Okay.
Go.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2017R37, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Carson City, Nevada, variable-rate hospital revenue refunding bonds for Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Project Series 2017B in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $36,870,000. Whoops. I'm not on D?
Yeah. 17D, we should be doing.
Oh, sorry. It's up, it advanced. Okay, let's try that again.
We need bigger computers.
You can't read them. They don't even have a scroll window. That's okay. I'm, I'll try it all over. I move to adopt Resolution 2017R37, a resolution authorizing the issuance of Carson City, Nevada, hospital revenue bonds, Carson Tahoe Hospital Regional Healthcare Project Series 2017A in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $61,695,000 to finance costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping additional health and care facilities and supplemental facilities for a health and care facility for the benefit of Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare, a Nevada nonprofit corporation, making determinations as to the sufficiency of revenues and as to other matters related to such project and such bonds, delegating to city officials the authority to determine certain final terms of the bonds, authorizing the execution by the city of a loan agreement, an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, and certain closing documents in connection therewith, and ratifying all consistent actions heretofore taken toward the issuance and sale of the bonds. Woo! Woo! Next time, I think we're going to find a, it's your fault. Wow, okay.
Yeah, you know, that's one of those ones where, thank you for making that motion, because I guess it's one of those ones where if we didn't, Ryan's going to be back there screaming at us for not being an inclusive motion, so, okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Hearing none. We got two abstentions, three yes. Okay? All right, let's take up 17 Echo. This is for $36,870,000 to refinance certain obligations previously issued by the city not, in aggregate amount, not to exceed $12,508,000 to refinance certain obligations previously issued by the city for the benefit of Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare, a nonprofit corporation. Do you want to, Ann, do you want to tell us what this one's all about? We have, just a secondary, when you already talked to us about $61 million. Take us through.
Our to do an advanced refunding on two of our debt. So it's to take out the old 203B and the 2005. Those are currently, have credit enhancements with letters of credit, and we want to take those out and put them with US Bank for a seven-year placement.
Okay, I think I get that one. Run that by one more time, what you're going to do.
We have these two variable debts out there, 2003B and 2005. They have credit enhancements that are called letters of credit, and these letters of credits, because of changes in banking reform, are getting more difficult to renew, and our letter of credit will expire in 2019. So preemptively, we have worked with US Bank, and we have worked with our underwriting and counsel to determine that the best way for Carson Tahoe to work with that 2003B and 2005 debt is to do a direct placement with US Bank. What that does for a bank is that becomes an asset to a bank, whereas having a letter of credit is a liability to a bank. And with the Basel reforms, the more liabilities they have, they have, the more liquidity they need, and that's why it's difficult to do. So it's simply changing our current debt structure. It's not taking on any new money.
I got it now. All right, Suvaize Barrett.
Yeah, I assume from what you're saying, there's no real savings on this. This is just something that makes things move more smoothly, or are there savings?
There are savings, the costs are lower on a direct placement than on a letter of credit. So we will save approximately $2 million over the next seven years.
Good, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
So just a question, and maybe it's really the combination between 17E and 17F, but just for an understanding again on the record, because the documents are indicating that it's $11,540,000, is that the current outstanding principal balance on one of the two you're going to do? Because, and.
And the cost of issuance.
And the cost of issuance. I'd just like that on the record so that, again, the public can understand why the motion's going to be $12,508,000, because nothing's for free. Yeah, okay.
And again, there's no hook for the city?
That's correct.
Adriana, are we comfortable?
I am. It's on the record. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Public comment? Board? Three of us? Any further discussion?
We're up again.
We're up again. You want to.
My goodness, okay.
All right, Gloria, go.
Let's make sure this is on 17E. Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2017R38, a resolution authorizing the issuance of A, the Carson City, Nevada, variable-rate hospital revenue refunding bonds for Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Project Series 2017B in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $36,870,000. And B, the Carson City, Nevada, variable-rate hospital revenue refunding bonds for Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Project Series 2017C in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12,508,000, $12,508,000 to refinance certain obligations previously issued by the city for the benefit of Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare, a Nevada nonprofit corporation, making determinations as to the sufficiency of revenues and as to other matters related to such refunding projects and such bonds, delegating to city officials the authority to determine certain final terms of the bonds, authorizing the execution by the city of certain loan agreements, indentures of trusts, and closing documents in connection therewith, and ratifying all consistent actions heretofore taken toward the issuance and sale of the bonds.
I know, I get a nickel for that, right?
You ought to ask for a dime.
Yeah.
All right. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Posed, anybody opposed? No, there, so it's three yes, two abstentions. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. All right, hang up for just one second here. All right, let's take up 17F. This is to confirm the engagement of Sherman &amp; Howard to act as bond counsel for the two debts that we just talked about, or three, actually, with the issuance of $61,695,000, another one in the amount of $36,870,000, and the last third one that we've all discussed, $11,540,000 for the hospital, shorthand for that.
So this is the one that we have the problem on the motion, because the principal amount on the second one, on the Series 2017C, should be $12,508,000. We had an incorrect number on the engagement letter.
I have it for correction.
We got it? Everybody back, everybody in the, who's here, understand, kind of understand what we're doing here? All right, I mean.
I don't know. Are they glazing over because it's bonds?
You know, actually, our eyes can glaze over with bonds in a way you can read these things, but, you know, when the poop hits the fan, it really pays off to have bond counsel. So, all right. Suvaize Barrett, question?
And since we have bond counsel, and I probably should have asked this question earlier, but I'm still trying to understand the hook for the city. I'm the member of the board of supervisors who sits on the debt management commission. This will also not give us a higher amount on our bond counsel or Nancy, when we go to figure how much we are in debt, this will not go on top of that, right?
That's correct.
It's essentially transparent to the city. I mean, it has no risk liability, no financial liability, and by part of the risk liability, it means there's no risk to the city by adding it to our bond base and what we can levy according to law. Okay? Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody? All right, we'll take a motion to appoint Sherman &amp; Howard to confirm the engagement.
I move to confirm the engagement of Sherman &amp; Howard as bond counsel to Carson City, Nevada, in connection with the issuance of the $61,695,000 Carson City, Nevada, hospital revenue bonds, Series 2017A, the $36,870,000 Carson City, Nevada, variable-rate hospital revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017B, and the $12,508,000 Carson City, Nevada, variable-rate hospital revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017C, with the associated fees to be paid by the Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Corporation at the closing from the bond proceeds.
Second. There's a motion, there's a motion and a second. On a motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carries three yes, two abstentions. Okay? All right, thank you. Go do good things.
Thank you very much.
Make sure that the trip between the surgery center and the hospital works well. I need to have that. I mean, you know what? I always wonder, you know, you go into Sierra Surgery, suppose something happens, I got to take an ambulance around the corner there. You know, I'd rather just have them whip me up in a whatever.
Pass a gurney.
Take a gurney. Take a gurney, run me up there. All right. Anything else, board, on this one? Okay, thanks, Ryan, thanks, Mike, thanks, Anne. Okay, all right, go do good things. Let's take up something with a little more color to it, a little more creativity to it than bonds.
A little more concrete.
A little more concrete. All right, let's take up a public art project entitled "Inside the Mind of Da Vinci" for placement at Mills Park. Who's doing this? Jennifer and Mr. Who was Da Vinci anyway, huh?
Good morning. Well, about one year and one month ago today, I was in charge with developing a creative identity for Carson City and providing a pathway to that vision in accordance to the Arts and Culture Master Plan that you passed. The process has been careful, informative, and I think better built by the day. Today, we're here in front of you to get a right of entry for a piece that I think is a signature first step for Carson City, and that is the work of Michelle Riley, who is here with us today. Michelle is a Carson City artist, and the artwork that we're seeking a right for entry for is called "Inside the Mind of Da Vinci."
Sorry, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. We just got reminded just carefully by our district attorney's office, this is approval of the project, not the right of entry. Just to clarify.
Approval of the project, right?
Okay.
Not a right of entry. Okay. Michelle, you wanna come up and sit at the table?
I have a seat.
Come on. All right, Mark, go ahead.
So I can, Michelle, would you like to introduce yourself here and...
Michelle Riley, sculptor, local artist, living in Carson City.
So as you can see by the supporting materials, "Inside the Mind of Da Vinci" is a concrete and metal, seven and a half ton sculpture. It has quite an interesting provenance of venue and environment. It's been on display in the Black Rock Desert at Burning Man, and it's been, so it's withheld the torment and temperature of that environment, as well as having been exposed to the full, our full winter last year outside of the library at UNR, which Michelle is an alumni, and it's also a place where, through 3D printing, the piece was helped realize. The Culture and Tourism Authority is entering into a contract with Michelle to purchase the piece, and the, that contract is between our two parties, and it's actually, in ironing that out with DA's office, it's a learning process, enlightening process, in developing our long-term policies and procedures for public art here, as opposed to the blanket what-ifs that that document is achieving. This is a very isolated, singular agreement that we're making here with Michelle, and we've brought in front of the Parks and Rec Commission on August 1st, the concept of having it placed here outside of the community center. "Inside the Mind of Da Vinci" was created to be a symbol of creative problem solving and community, and I think a lot of, as we've seen today, a lot of creativity in, in community problem solving is done here on a daily basis. It's also strategically placed out here outside of the community center, because it's just across the street from the library, and working with the director there, we're looking forward to putting together STEAM and STEM activities, Da Vinci Days. We are going to be purchasing the artwork from Michelle for a price of $30,000, made into payments. What we're proposing here is that, as the policies and procedures are being built, and knowing that this year's Nevada Day Parade theme is arts and entertainment, we are going to pay those costs upfront for crane installation, grounds preparation, and lighting for the piece, and we're coming to the city to ask for your interest in being given the piece on loan for two years while we are paying off the piece. So there's no cost to the city. I've been working with Jen and her staff, Dan Stuckey, on coordinating their needs as far as what contractors' needs are, and rerouting water, making sure that the ground is stabilized for its weight and for its duration. We seek to donate this piece 100% its title to the city within two years after we pay for it in full. Jane, am I missing anything?
So my question really comes to, what if in five years, the city determines that the piece is no longer appropriate for the community center location, or that, do we then have the rights to dispose of the artwork in any way we want?
Well, within the next two years of our agreement, we would be able to give each other 30 days' notice if it had to be removed. The Culture and Tourism Authority would still own the piece, and we would find, we would look for another location to put it. The policies and procedures will be in place well before then, and those steps of deaccessioning a piece, if it's in the city's property, would be approved by your board.
I think, I think there's two processes, and I'm just trying to make sure we're not missing a piece, because I thought I understood that the agreement is between the cultural commission and the artist, but where does the city come in with its authority to decommission? Because I thought you said at the end of the two years, you were gonna dedicate it to the city, and I just want, it's better to do things now and be clear on the processes than three or four years from now, so I would just like to understand that a little better.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. For two years, it is on loan, and if approved by you today, we'll provide the permission to have this house on our property. After the two years is over, we would come back to the board with a donation agreement that would allow those terms, and it would outline what those roles and rules and rights would be, because upon that donation, should something happen catastrophically and it not be deemed safe, or other matters, and we'll work through that agreement at that time with those terms for your future consideration after the two years. Does that answer your question?
It answers it. It's just tough to take something without knowing where that, where that would be. I would've rather seen what that agreement could kind of look like, but, okay.
We do have some samples from other agencies across the nation to draw from, so we can learn from their experiences and try to craft something that you're all comfortable with, with approving down the road.
Mark, just a clarification, you mentioned in your presentation that the purchase price was $30,000, but our staff package says $60,000?
Do you let me correct myself? It was two payments of $30,000 over two years, where a total of $60,000.
And I am, I am an admirer of Michelle's work. I actually own one of her sculptures that we purchased from her about 12 years ago. So if the city ever decides to decommission this, I'd be happy to look at purchasing it.
Seven tons?
Ours is a little smaller.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is a daycare house.
All right. Go.
And I just want to thank Mark and the Culture and Tourism Authority for making this happen.
Ditto. Well, I think this is the first time we're doing this, and I think, you know, that we all raise good questions up here, so we'll work through these as they happen, but we want to thank you for bringing this to us, and we'll see if there's any outstanding, public comment that want to address this issue. Anybody?
I will speak to the timing, so we can look at the calendar. The, we're looking to, provided it's approved today, we're looking to break ground in time so that after the Nevada Day Parade, that this piece would be placed. There would be no groundbreaking ceremony, anything like that, would be a working week. There are several components in putting something like this in place, and some vendors. So once Cassinelli is complete, doing what they need to do, and a three-foot lane of gravel is put around the piece for presentation, we would bring in another contractor for, another vendor for electricity to put two spots on the front and one spot on the back, just for visibility at night. We'd be looking at starting, Cassinelli starting on Monday, October 30th.
And again, where's the location?
The location is on the southeast corner of Roop and Williams, here on the corner outside the, just west of the LED sign.
But it doesn't interfere with the LED sign?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, all right. Anybody else? Anybody? All right, who wants to make a motion? All right.
I move to install a sculpture called "Inside the Mind of the Da Vinci" at Mills Park, with the recognition that an ongoing agreement will be necessary with the Board of Supervisors at the conclusion of the two years.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay, thank you, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right.
Are we gonna have a ribbon cutting?
Once it's all in place, we'll get the lights on it, yes, of course.
We might bring Da Vinci in to do a ribbon cutting. Yeah. All right, let's take up disc golf. Jen Budge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Greg Swift. Who else you got with you here?
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director, and I have Greg Swift and other members of the Eagle Valley Disc Golf Association here as well.
Morning, everyone. And this is Mike Plansky. He's part of the Tahoe Regional Collective of Disc Golf. He was also helped us in the design of the course, along with various others, but I can let him tell you his background, but it's pretty interesting that he actually did his master's thesis on disc golf, so he's quite an expert in the subject.
A master's thesis on disc golf. All right, let's hear about that, then we'll talk to Jen about what's going on here.
Okay, yeah, I got my master's in landscape architecture in 2013 at Cal Poly Pomona, and my thesis was on disc golf course design and development. I did interviews at four different courses in Southern California, and I've continued my interest in course design. I've taken courses from John Howke, who is the premier disc golf course designer in the world, actually arranged a workshop up here in Lake Tahoe recently with him, but also involved with doing surveys in Lake Tahoe at the Bijou and the Zephyr Cove courses with Strategic Marketing Group to show the diversity of people that play, who it serves, and the tourist economic value of having courses in our region.
Okay, all right, let's hear from Jen. Turn your lights off there, guys, otherwise we...
Thank you again, Jennifer Budge, Parks Director. Before I even kick this off, I want to thank the members of the Eagle Valley Disc Golf Association. This wouldn't even be happening today if it wasn't their vision and their hard work. This was a true grassroots effort. I think it's really a great example for citizens of our community that can see, just a thought that maybe came across, you having coffee with your friends, can really, you know, put some blood, sweat, and tears in it, and it can be a project in reality later on. So this is really a credit to them and their effort and their vision, and we really appreciate it and are happy to be part of it. So today before you is a consideration of accepting a land and water conservation fund grant. This is a federal grant passed locally through Nevada State Parks. The National Recreation and Parks Association identifies disc golf as one of the fastest-growing sports in the nation, so this is something that's very popular, it's really been growing in our region, and something that Carson City is really excited to offer. This is a $118,285 grant. Land and Water Conservation Fund requires a one-to-one match, so the city would be contributing an equivalent match as well, which is a combination of cash, but primarily in-kind effort. And I do want to highlight that the majority of that in-kind effort, while there's some city staff, is really from members of the Eagle Valley Disc Golf Association, and them committing to helping install tee boxes and all of the baskets, and helping putting in the fencing, and all of that labor that we're gonna be capturing on that project is the majority of the match. So it really deserves that acknowledgement, and the paperwork they're gonna have to do to track that, I thank them in advance, because it's not fun, so it might even be harder than the actual labor on the ground. So we will be constructing an 18-hole tournament course and a nine-hole introductory course, which is great for teaching and for youth, or anybody that, that might have some physical limitations, it's a great way to still be able to go out and use and enjoy this opportunity. We will be developing and working, I know Supervisor Bonkowski and Supervisor Bagwell had questions about long-term maintenance, and that's a great question. We're committed to working with them and trying to get something long-term in writing for sustainable maintenance of this facility. The maintenance costs are gonna be very minimal compared to our other park system. I do need to throw that out there. It is on the route for our trash truck already, we go to the Pony Express Air Park already, and the rifle range, which is nearby. It's easy for staff to add that to their existing route, but as far as picking up trash that blows in and identifying any, you know, safety issues or vandalism with the baskets and tee boxes and those things of that nature, we'll work with Eagle Valley Disc Golf folks to, to do that cooperatively. There is an anticipated cost of $1,500 annually for the portable restroom that would be onsite, and that would be a handicap-accessible restroom. I do anticipate working with the Disc Golf Association on getting sponsorships for tee boxes and baskets and other opportunities to help offset that cost, and I look forward to working with them to try to figure out sort of a funding plan to put that together. So I see that funding plan and that maintenance written agreement working together cooperatively. And we already have a special use permit from the Planning Commission, so as soon as we get this approval, we're really anxious to get going. After we get the notice to proceed, after the grant paperwork's signed, we could immediately start on this, and we hope to have this ready to go by late fall, or late spring of 2018.
Okay. I'm talking to Greg earlier in the day. Are we comfortable that we have an actual organization that can, we can contract with to do maintenance? Greg?
Yes, Mayor. We do have a large core presently that are anxious and very willing to maintain the thing, and as Jennifer said, you know, we'll be taking care of that property, you know, we're gonna take pride in that. But the maintenance costs are very minimal, so I wanted to assure you that with this grant that we worked hard to get, you know, that's gonna help us put the infrastructure that we need, but we definitely have an organized group, and we didn't want to put the cart in front of the horse. I think you're gonna see it grow even more. There's a lot of people anxious, but we're waiting for this course to actually take place and be built, you know, before they jump on board. But, but the community as a whole, and we're working with people from Douglas County, Tahoe Regional, to see how they do things, but I can assure you that we're not gonna just, you know, this is just like momentum moving forward. You're gonna see us build this the proper way and take care of it.
Okay, and Greg, you know, I guess, you know, there's a difference between a lot of volunteers and an actual legal organization. We want to make sure that, you know, that we have a legal organization that's gonna help do these things, as opposed to an association of volunteers that have no legal responsibility to either to themselves or to the, to the city.
Yes, Mayor. Currently, we are with the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. Currently, we are with the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation, who is, we're under their umbrella. They are a 501(c)(3). We have talked briefly, you know, we're moving forward. Again, this project's just starting. We may eventually have our own 501(c)(3), but I do want to tell you right now, I was at the foundation meeting yesterday, and they support our project, and we have worked hand-in-hand. You could see the, in the grant proposal they sent, you know, they were part of the ones that gave us a recommendation letter.
Yeah, I get that, and I'm, I don't know how far to drill down on this one, Greg, but just think of it like this. If the city wants to enter into an agreement with someone for the long-term maintenance of the disc golf course, are you saying that that would, that agreement would be with the foundation or with somebody else?
No, under the foundation, Mayor, for the 501(c)(3) part of it.
Well, I got the 501(c)(3) part, but the actual physical organization that would, that would be contractually obligated to help on the maintenance over time.
Oh, yeah, the Eagle Valley Disc Golf Association. We've already discussed that in detail, is very willing to take that part on. And again, I want to remind you that it's not going to, I can assure you, I know you need to have your part covered, but these baskets and teapads can be moved pretty readily. It's not, and I see that the grant's a huge amount of money, but we are very committed to making this the pride of the region. And this area is becoming a mecca for disc golf with the Tahoe courses. In the winter, they can't play up at Tahoe, so they're very anxious for us to get one. And again, it's been a long process. It's, you know, time for us to do it, but I...
It's a great idea, and all I'm trying to say is we need to cross the Ts and dot the Is on who's responsible, and it can't just be a loose association of people that are responsible because they have no, they have no legal ability to execute on behalf of an organization. So, and Mike, you can probably tell us, you've got a master's in this stuff. I mean, what's your experience on how these things are done? On maintenance, you know, I mean, I got the grant stuff, but how about the maintenance going forward? Is that done through a private entity or what?
Well, with disc golf, the vast majority of disc golf courses are, the maintenance of the courses is handled by basically informal clubs. That's what happens generally with disc golf throughout the country, through my experience studying courses that have been put in and maintained. We have proposed nonprofit in Douglas County that we're waiting to pull the trigger on. And we do have, we're starting to formalize our Tahoe Regional Disc Golf Collective, which includes, the concept is to share information and ideas and resources between people in Tahoe, Douglas County, and Carson City, basically. And that's the Tahoe Regional Disc Golf Collective. And we've met several times, and we've helped each other with our projects, and that could become more formalized, but we have no plans at this time.
Well, I'll ask you folks just to take this under advisement, and it's something we've got to solve if it's the foundation that's gonna be liable or responsible for maintenance, other than just a straight statement that they support it, that they are willing to take over its long-term maintenance. And if they'll say that, that's fine. I mean, because then we've got an organization that has perpetual life, or potentially perpetual life, that we don't have to go back and worry about volunteers coming or going. Okay? Jen?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. We, I envision a maintenance and use agreement. There's a lot of things, not just maintenance, that need to be addressed. There may be tournaments here, there may be scheduling, there may be a lot of other issues, and that needs to really be contemplated in a written agreement. Washto County has a written agreement with the Reno Disc Golf Association, that's a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) that has insurance. We need to have some sort of arrangement like that for the future of this facility. I'm committed to working with Greg and the other members to try to make sure we do have a written agreement, whether that may be under the umbrella of the Parks Foundation. Should that be agreeable to them? If the Disc Golf Association doesn't want to create their own, we've also talked about if there's a national organization that you can be under their umbrella, like our BMX operation currently is, then you can have a local affiliate under that national organization. So, I do think we have options, and they seem very committed to that. But we need that for long-term sustainability of this facility. I agree.
Okay. Everybody at the table agree to that? Yes?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to say one last thing is if you go out to that property now, and I don't know how familiar you are with the state it was in when we started working on this project, but they know us personally at the landfill from helping clean that area. And again, I know you need a formal commitment, which we're, we're new to the process, but we're very committed to doing that, so I want to work with Jennifer.
Just work with Jen and get, and dot the Is and cross the Ts and we'll go forward. Because it's a good thing to do. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to throw cold water on it. There are just certain things we have to do from a fiduciary standpoint. Okay, SuFaz Barret.
Can I just do, I just potentially want to do a disclosure since the discussion took a broader stroke than the motion, that I am a member of the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. We're currently not in a use agreement situation or anything, but I just wanted to disclose that for the record since we're moving into a potential maintenance discussion. So, for information purposes only, certainly if they approached the foundation to have an ongoing relationship and determine a use agreement with parks, like we did Wognima House, you know, but it would have to be voted on by the, by the foundation board. So, that's just informational, and again, I just wanted to disclose that for the record since it took, took a further stretch there.
Yep, no problem. Alright, SuFaz Barret, then SuFaz Bonkowski.
Yeah, first of all, I think you understand that those of us who sit up here are here for four, eight, or 12 years, and that this thing will be with us for 50 or 100 if we're lucky, or longer. And so, we have to be able to see past our graves what's gonna happen. So, that's why we need a party, a partner to work with. So, I think you recognize what we're talking about here. And I don't disagree that the foundation could take that on if it wanted to, but the foundation has a lot of other interests. So, an entity that's dedicated to disc golf, and I don't question your commitment. I was there from the beginning, as you recall, in another capacity and watched this. In that light, to change the subject slightly, Jen, could you tell me a better breakdown of how much is actual money the city is putting up and how much is in-kind services, et cetera, to match the $181,000? Because the city isn't gonna be on the hook for $181,000, as I understand it.
Thank you, Supervisor Barrett. Those are great questions. If you look at the fiscal impact section of your staff report...
Yes, I have, I just want to get on the record.
And there's a detailed staff report. It's basically $7,500 is coming from question 18, capital. And we have private donations. We also have contractor discounts that have been negotiated. There's in-kind labor, but as far as actual cash from the city, there is that. And then, there's also donations that are currently being held by the Carson City Parks Foundation that will be contributed to this after the grant is accepted and at the right time.
Thank you. I just wanted any viewers to understand that.
Just to help beat this horse to death. Jen, can you give us some assurance that this course, once constructed, will not be open for play until we have a written maintenance agreement signed by the appropriate parties? Because there's a liability issue here. If we open this course for play to the public, you talked about insurance being one. So, if, if the, the group that isn't going to be responsible for maintenance is not providing insurance, or we don't have a contract with somebody who's putting on a tournament, who's providing the insurance, is the city then gonna provide insurance? And if so, then shouldn't that be included at some point in the fiscal impact?
So, I don't think this will happen, but let's play a worst-case scenario and we don't have a group that we would enter into an agreement for maintenance. Let's play out that scenario. This is part of the city's park system, it's city land, and it would be considered under the city's insurance. There's also a recreation immunity statute in Nevada that protects for outdoor recreation activities. There's a lot of protections in place for the city from a general use standpoint and from a park user standpoint. It would be our responsibility to go and inspect it on a regular basis, just like we do our play equipment, and it would be part of our schedule and our infrastructure preservation. So, we have to be willing to take that on, and, you know, city staff is. I'm hoping that, I'm very confident that we'll have partners in this effort, but I don't see this as being a high liability location as far as a park goes. This is much less risk than like a playground structure or something more active like a swimming pool. So, this is, this is a very low-maintenance facility. It's not something that's too intensive, but there is always a risk with every, every recreation activity. Does that answer your question?
So, we have a Plan A and a Plan B?
Yep. We're Plan B, we got it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at the board? Public comment? Anybody? Go, shoot. Sure.
William McKissick. I'm with the Tahoe Collective. And I'd just like to say for one thing, too, with, if there's a tournament, the person putting on the tournament supplies the insurance, just to let you understand that one. So, I guess there's a Plan C then. And then, up in Tahoe, when we met with Douglas County Commissioners, the issue of maintenance came up, and there was a few board members talking about how nice the Zephyr Cove Disc Golf course was in the means of maintenance. And there's pretty much zero maintenance involved. The people take care of it. You would be surprised of how clean that course is with, there's nobody taking care of it but, but the people that play. That's how little that you need to keep a course in nice maintenance. And I just wanted to state that.
Okay. Okay. Alright, any other public comment? Anybody? Alright, board, let's see what we can do here to raise some money for them, then let them cross the Ts and dot the Is on the legalities of going forward. Alright?
I move to accept a $118,285 city-required-match grant, Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, project number P17AP00160/32-00354 for the design and construction of a disc golf course complex Phase 1 and site improvements on a portion of APN 010-691-04, located west of Flint Drive and Rifle Range Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the project agreement on behalf of Carson City, understanding that a maintenance agreement will be worked out.
On the motion discussion, everybody okay with this so far? You okay? Maintenance and other attributes of running a disc golf course, okay? Is that clear on the motion? You agree with that? John?
Yes.
Alright.
May I have a clearer understanding of the motion, a maintenance agreement?
A maintenance agreement also...
Are we saying that it, one is required?
Well, I think we need a maintenance agreement period, so I think...
I don't think it should be in the motion. You want one, but not all of our parks have use agreements.
No, but I think that we...
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you don't mind. Perhaps we could have that separate motion, and then you could also direct staff to enter into a maintenance and use agreement? Would that be appropriate?
Alright, reset the motion.
I move to accept a $118,285 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, project number P17AP00160/32-00354 for the design and construction of a disc golf course complex Phase 1 and site improvements on a portion of APN 010-691-04, located west of Flint Drive and Rifle Range Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the project agreement on behalf of Carson City and direct staff to work forward on a maintenance agreement.
I'll second that. Our staff will bring that to us when it's completed.
Alright. We okay with the motion? Yeah? Alright. On a motion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay, carried. Thank you very much, thanks, disc golf folks. Thank you, guys. Alright, let's take up item 19 before we take a break for lunch. Board members, these are discussion times, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I want to encourage members of this board and the public to buy tickets for the Capitol Collage, which is Friday, October 27, to support the Carson City Cultural Commission and its efforts for the arts. Tickets are only $50. Mark Salinas has done a fabulous job of providing an incredible evening of entertainment. In the mind of Da Vinci, we'll be there, the fire dancers are gonna be there. It's quite a kickoff to the Nevada Day weekend. So, I encourage folks to get out there and get their tickets, and those can be accessed at the Culture and Tourism Authority, which is on the corner of Washington and Carson Street.
I'll second that, not in motion.
Then, secondly, I want to let you know that the fair for this coming year is slated to be July 25 through the 29. So, save the date, participate, and donate. We are looking for volunteers to help out in this effort. And just to clarify, last year with really minimal time to organize and to get a fair going, they did an incredible job and raised $22,893.74. And really, with what was provided, we're merely $2,100 in the red. So, actually, they did a tremendous job. So, this year, boots on the ground, and a lot of volunteers were at the meeting, but we still need more. So, I encourage everyone, and if you have any questions, contact Cooperative Extension, and they can direct you to the proper person to speak to.
Karen and I, we're at our monthly meeting of the Carson Water Subconservancy District last night, and we are still trying to deal with the damage from last winter's floods. And we just recently approved grants to help both Lion County and Douglas County fix some of the damage to the riverbanks and some of the grade structures in both of those counties. And we are working on some other grants to help fix some of the problems that we've seen in Carson. But actually, Carson had minimal damage compared to, especially Douglas County. They had the majority of the damage, and then on the river basin itself, and then Lion County had significant damage from alluvial flooding that damaged quite a few houses. So, we're working on those issues still, but we're getting up to winter and might run out of time.
Anybody else? John?
Yeah, first of all, I see and saw earlier that we're gonna have the Airport Authority vacancies up right after lunch. I wanted to report, we met last night, and we're proceeding with, moving forward with trying to get a new manager or on either a part or full-time basis. Some of that stuff's up in the air, so we need to pick the people who will help us because there were only four of us at the Airport Authority meeting last night. And so, I just wanted to give that report. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else, city manager? Let me just say one last thing here. I've been approached by a group that wants to finance the construction of a replica of the National Archives exhibit of the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. It would be about a 23-foot-long, about three or four feet, three feet high, readable high, but it would be an exact replica of what you see at the National Archives. They're looking for, you know, somebody, someplace to put that. If somebody has a great idea about it, but one of the, one of the places that I've been thinking about is right outside in the plaza, right there in front of the courthouse there. Looks like it might be... looks like it might be capable, it's a very heavy thing. They would raise all the funds for it, which is about 90 grand, and we just have to make sure that the foundation is strong enough to hold that thing, so if anybody wants to see that stuff, we haven't got much, you know, I've talked to the city manager briefly about it, but if anybody wants to see some of those plans, we'll see if we can make this work or not work, okay? All right. All right, anything else?
I do just, just one, potentially for a future agenda item, and keeping with something John just said on the airport, and because of our next agenda item, one of the issues I saw is that you can only have, if you serve a four-year term, you can only have that four-year term, you can't be reappointed, and I'm wondering if we're not, we're having a continuity problem on the Airport Authority for planning purposes, that we might want to consider that in the future as a legislation recommendation for change, so to keep that on the list for discussion for future legislative action potentially, and maybe even run that by the Airport Authority.
I'll second that, non-motion from my perspective. I think that was a legacy from Bob Thomas, who's no longer with us, and so we probably should at least look at it and see how we feel about it.
All right. Anything else, board, on non-action items? All right, then, we did well this morning, we'll be in recess until 1:30, and we'll take up the airport and Lompah, and something about Sue Meriwether, you want something?
She's like, I'm at the bitter end.
Yeah, I know.
All right, we'll be in recess till 1:30.